All right, while we get started, I do want to let those know that we have agendas that'll be being placed out. Do apologize that they weren't not here at the start of the meeting, but they are coming. We also do have the agenda on each of the screens as well while you wait. Ms. Hannah, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm getting some type of beeping.
I have no clue.
Yeah, I don't think it's you. I'm just making sure that we're aware. I don't know if it means something's gonna die. I mean, beeping is never a good sound. All right, I would like to call to order the November 9th, 2021 Wakegan Public School Board of Education meeting. The board previously met in closed session under exceptions C1, C11, and C10. If I can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Present.
Mr. McBride?
Present.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wosniak?
Here.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
President Ewing?
Here. All right, and Ms. Hannah is participating remotely. She is at a school district conference on behalf of Wakegan Public Schools, which is an allowable exception for remote participation. So Ms. Hannah, thank you for joining us and for your dedication. She has one of the best attendance records out of any boards, not just this one. So we appreciate your dedication. I hope you bring back some good stuff from NAPSC.
Yeah, I hope I do get some good stuff and welcome everyone.
Perfect. So with that, I'd like a motion to go into open session or resume open session.
Mr. Riddle.
Motion by Ms. Wosniak, second by Mr. Riddle. If I can have a roll call.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wosniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes. All right, we're now in open session and agendas are at the back station for anyone who would like one. With that, we are at the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Hillary, if you'd be so kind as to lead us in the pledge. All right, next up is our president's report. If we can get that pulled up. It should be one before that. Um, yes, no, maybe? Or did you add them to this one, Nick? Okay, so we'll go in reverse order. I'll start with this one while we get the other presentation. So it is that time again for our student board member search. So Mr. Sunny, we thank you and we appreciate your dedication. We still have some months with him, but the process is starting. Next slide, please. Who will be the next student board member? So for those who are watching online or attend the schools, this is just a rundown of our last four student board members, and so we'll be having a new one for 2022. Next slide. A student board member is a non-voting member of the Board of Education who acts as a liaison between the students and school board. The selected student is given time on each school board meeting agenda to speak regarding student concerns, curriculum, and activities. These are some of the selection criteria, so teachers, staff, those online. This is what we're looking for or the minimum requirement. So must be a Wakegan High School junior or sophomore. Have a grade point average of 2.0 or higher. Submit a one-page personal bio and submit written responses to the following questions. Why are you interested in being a student board member? What do you feel is the most important issue that Wakegan students face today? How would you engage your fellow students to ensure their voices are heard? And then number five, provide one written reference from a teacher, administrator, or a community member. So this is our timeline for this year. November 15th, so in just a short week, Wakegan High School sophomores and juniors will receive a letter about position with directions on how to apply. November 29th, sophomores and juniors will get a follow-up email. December 6th is the deadline. They'll vote on December 9th because what we do is allow the students to vote and the top two candidates, top two candidates are presented to the Board of Education for selection. And right now, at our January 11th or 25th meeting, the student will appoint our student board member who will serve for one year. On January 25th, our student board member will be seated and sworn in. So Board of Education, this is our process and Nick will make sure that you all have this election timeline. Perfect. And now we're going to keep going with the president's report. So just a reminder, if we scroll to the first slide, I always want to keep it front and center, which is our mission and our vision. Perfect. Next slide. Just Board of Education, unity of purpose. We affirm the unique role of public education whereby each community collectively pulls its resources for the common good through the education of its students. And we seek to uphold and build trust, become an effective team. We understand our individual jobs and responsibilities. We want to be a team with a common focus, common focus direction. And we want to create a district culture that supports positive change. We want to perpetuate a positive district culture that survives in the face of board member and staff turnover. Next slide. We have our behavioral expectations that are in front of you. And next slide. I want to thank everyone who was involved with bringing Secretary Becerra to Jack Benny. It was a coordinated and team effort. But special thanks to Ms. Alajakis out of the superintendent's office who coordinated along with Congressman Snyder's office. And big thanks to Congressman Snyder for thinking about Wakegan Public Schools. And we had an awesome conversation about the work and effort that has been happening throughout Lake County and Parsa Cook County related to vaccine distribution. And then I was excited as a father that my son Nehemiah was one of the... One of two superintendent's son, Mr. Cyrus, who got their vaccine today for ages five to 11. So this is an exciting time in our nation. It is another step in the right direction in order to ensure that vaccines are now available for all students age five and up. You know, and so we want to reinforce the idea that safety is important. We know that there are systemic issues that impact our buildings. We know that brown, black and brown communities have been disproportionately impacted. And so I'm encouraging everyone who has, who can, to get the vaccine. And so I have a six-year-old and we have already scheduled his appointment with our pediatrician because we want to ensure that not only we are leading by example, but we're keeping our kids as safe as possible and our community as safe as possible. Along those lines, you may have received a broadband survey. Make sure that you complete that. I have the belief that reliable internet should be as accessible and available as water and electricity. So if you receive that in the mail, make sure that you complete that survey. And then finally, parents would have received a, from sixth through 12th grade, should have received a survey in which they are asking about career and technical education offerings at the high school. Make sure that you complete it because your input is what they need in order to make sure that we have a plan that addresses our students and community needs. So this concludes our president's report. Thank you for your time. We now come to our opportunity for public comment as there were no special recognition and presentations. Just as a reminder, there's a sign-in sheet. When I call your name, please walk to the microphone. I will allow you, I know it's hard to talk through these masks, so if you are more comfortable, please, you can remove your mask during your public comment time. And then I ask that you immediately return it upon your return to your seat. If you need translation services, translation services will be provided to you. We do ask that you just pause in between comments so that we allow the microphone to be sanitized. With that, the first name that I have on the list is Jody Kelly. And we'll get the clock on the screen. And Ms. Kelly, whenever you're ready, your time will start, okay?
Sure, thanks. Esteemed Board, Superintendent, and Community. My name is Jody Kelly. I've been a member, as a high school teacher in Wakegan for 18 years. I am a union member. I'm here to discuss the safety at our high school, specifically the scarcity of safety officers on-site each day. It is my understanding that we have approximately 14 safety staff at Washington Campus. As the building has three floors, seven stairwells, 30 exterior doors, and more than 2,000 students, we do not have enough safety. For example, my colleague yesterday was walking down a staircase from third floor and when he got to the second floor, he slipped and fell. Apparently, the floor had been smeared with hand sanitizer. Luckily, it wasn't a passing period, so my colleague contacted the janitor and the closest classroom teacher blocked off the area with a chair. My coworker recalled that there were some students standing there in the hallway where he fell. One of them was his own student who did nothing to help and simply laughed with a friend. Safety was not in the area. I'm sure they were on the floor, but it is a very long building. The increase in number of fights, whether in classrooms or during passing periods, is an indicator not only of the rapid escalation in tension felt throughout the school and community, but is unintentionally being supported by the knowledge that security cannot intervene quickly. First responders in a school setting should not have their hands tied. They should have the ability to execute their responsibilities, knowing they are not leaving other areas unsupervised. We have changed the safety alarms in our bathrooms so that students can't blow vape on them in order to trigger an alarm. But here's the thing, kids are still smoking and vaping in the bathrooms. And I know we talked about that earlier. Due to vandalism and smoking issues, safety often locks bathrooms in an effort to restrict traffic. Often, the only open bathrooms are those down by the cafeteria because they can be monitored. It can take 10 minutes out of class for students to find an operational bathroom. While reducing the number of fire alarms is hugely important, please remember that each time the building is emptied, there's an opportunity for students to re-enter the building with something they didn't take out with them. This could cause the building to become unsafe. Shouldn't students go through the metal detectors each time they return to the building? Supporting COVID precautions does not always elicit the intended outcome. Frequently, students ignore us and sometimes verbally assault us. Having a front row seat to our hallways at Washington, I must contest the data presented to us at all, to us at the last board meeting, which indicates that mask-wearing is not a problem. Mask-wearing continues to be a problem. It is simply a behavior that teachers are unable to manage as it is so widespread. Please, come see for yourselves. Adding security positions to the high school budget can only help maintain a safe learning environment. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next name on the list is Carla Christopher.
Good evening. My name is Carla Christopher and I'm a teacher at Washington Campus and a union member. I would like to speak to you tonight about the sub shortage. I don't know if you're aware of it, but every day, multiple teachers, counselors, and even administrators are subbing classes every period. Even with everyone trying to help, we sometimes have classes sitting in rooms unsupervised. We have multiple classes that are taken to the cafeteria and supervised by culture and climate. I know there's a sub shortage all over the country. The question is how to solve the problem so students can get the best instruction possible and the supervision that we are legally obligated to provide. Our teachers are compensated $35 an hour to sub during their plan and lunch periods. That means they work approximately three-quarters of an hour, resulting in $27 minus taxes. This internal subbing is putting even more stress on teachers. Administrators can't do the work needed to run the schools because they have to sub if teachers and counselors can't do it. External subs are afraid to come because of COVID and the behavior that's escalating in our schools, as well as the low salary they receive. I'm aware that there has been an increase in the number of days teachers are taking off. I want you to imagine balancing the normal stress of daily teaching and planning in a school that lacks effective systems. Then you toss in the additional escalation of behavior, tardiness, and truancy. Teaching in a mask all day and trying to keep students wearing their mask properly on top of everything else is exhausting. Ms. Placencia experienced a small sample of that last week at Brookside Campus. Imagine doing that all day, every day. I don't want to stand up here and complain. I believe if you aren't part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. So here are a few suggestions you might consider. First, increase the pay for outside subs. This has been done very effectively in the past. If we pay subs enough, we can attract them from other higher-paying districts. Second, talk with the union about increasing the hourly rate for internal subbing, which might encourage others to sacrifice their free periods to help or at least reward those teachers that are already giving up valuable prep and lunchtime. Third, and probably what could be the most effective, ask all Lincoln Center administration to sub one day a week at the high school. Just one day a week is not too much to ask when you have teachers, counselors, and administrators doing it every single day. You talk about the support you want to provide. Well, this is your chance. I'm not sure how many administrators are housed here, but I know it's enough to make a significant difference. It also provides an opportunity for you to experience the impact of your decisions. This problem is not going away anytime soon. I hope you consider these ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christopher. The next name on the list is Amy Montalano.
Good evening. My name is Amy Montalano and I am speaking on behalf of all of my union members. I have been vocal about safety concerns and I'm happy to see that Ms. Placencia came to the high school to witness the increased student behavior. The fact that you experienced firsthand the level of disrespect does not make me happy, though. Rather, brings me greater concern. Being in a position of authority, you were able to utilize the systems in our school to combat the interaction you had. You were able to seek timely backup, remove the student from school, participate in the parent, participate in parent communication, and set boundaries with the student. My members are not afforded the same experience. Our systems are failing the staff and the students. I ask that we be able to get, to have a seat at the table to discuss in greater detail how to handle student behavior and to be supported by all administration in appropriate methods of addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montalano. Next name is Andy Frehleb.
Good evening. Hello, Ms. Placencia, members of the board. My name is Andy Frehleb and I am Wakegan Teachers Union President. Thank you, Ms. Placencia, for coming to Brookside to see firsthand some of the problems we brought up at the last board meeting. The big difference between what teachers, professionals, and safety officers handle on a daily basis and what happened last week is that the union members cannot demand that these problems be addressed immediately and we come back to see it every day. When a student swears that a faculty member for any reason, that person may send the student to climate and culture just to return to this class this next day. And the most the teacher might know is that there was a quote "administrative conversation," end quote. When a fight occurs in the classroom or in the hallway, we cannot get on the radio and demand that a hallway be shut down. We do not have any input as to whether the students are sent home or are continuing with their classes for the rest of the day. The safety officers are doing their best to get the students watching the fight go to class and stop those involved from, in the altercation. But because we don't have the training, resources, and support to handle these types of interactions, the cycle will continue. What you saw, Superintendent Placencia, is just a glimpse of what we are dealing with every day. We invite members of the board and administration to visit or substitute for a day. See for yourself if a fight happens again. See if a student asked to put his or her mask up is able to maintain wearing it for the rest of the class. And then at the end of the day, worry that someone came in contact with for a long period of time happens to have COVID. But you will not know because no one thought of who was in that room with the person with COVID on that particular day. Ms. Placencia, please personally meet with the leaders of the paraprofessional and teachers unions to start working on what proper, effective, restorative justice would look like, what can be done to improve COVID communications, and what action steps can be done to make our district a safe place for students to learn and teachers and staff to work. I thank you and I also want to reiterate President Ewing's call for people to get vaccinated now that it is five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Final name on the list is Brother Blanks. And then I don't know, Superintendent, if you wanted to. Up to you.
So, um, no, I'll address it during suit times.
All right, so we do appreciate, appreciate public comment. Go ahead.
So, good evening, everyone. Trish Placencia, Superintendent. So we did have a... So, we did have teachers coming for our past two meetings, and I'm going to say we can't have it both ways. We can't ask that the administration come out, observe, assist, and then state that I'm using my authority to clear problems. One of the reasons I am at Brookside Campus, I will be at Washington Campus, and I will be at AOE-C, is because I am looking at systems and structures. I've had over 20 parent conferences, and I can tell you, I probably used maybe less than five days of suspension with 20 children and just having conversations. It does take time. It takes effort. It takes including parents. But we are going to be hands-on, not only at Brookside, Washington, AOE-C. I keep hearing that we are in need of more safety, and we are looking at that, too. If we are in need of more safety, we will bring it to the board and ask for more safety at the Washington campus. As I had a meet and greet at Washington Campus today, I just stated, I'm not there yet. I'm still at Brookside. I will tell you that in speaking with our safety officers, they have told me that the climate has changed since we've been there, and they appreciate it. And it's only going to get better. Today, we did not even have one fight at Brookside, is what I'm told via text today. I was not able to go there today because we had Secretary of State Bracera with us. So, our goal is to improve, refine our systems, and add support where necessary. I do also want to state, as I'm in the high school, kids do need to be reminded about their mask. There are some kids that will give you a hard time, but the majority of our students are wearing their mask. When you look at 2,000 kids in a building and you see 10 to 12 below the nose, and when you say mask up, they put it up, we cannot penalize all of our children for some of our kids and say they're not wearing masks. Majority of kids are wearing masks, and I do invite the board to come to Brookside, to come to Washington, to come to AOE-C, to see exactly what is going on. In complete transparency, we have great kids. We have great teachers that are working really hard. Do we have some problem students? Yes, we do. After being out of school for 18 months in the midst of a pandemic, in a community that has suffered so much like ours, I don't know how we expect to come back and think that things are just going to be the norm. Our kids are hurting. Our staff is hurting. Administration is hurting. People have lost people. We are not out of this yet. The vaccinating just became available from 5:00 to 11:00, and thank goodness, my son was able to participate in that. We still have, I don't want to say a long road ahead of us, but we still have some ways to travel. And as I've been telling our staff, we have to get through this together, and I am committed to ensuring that our systems align, that the support is added where needed, and that we are supporting our teachers while supporting our students. I will adamantly tell you, I am not against suspension. I do not believe it should be the first thing we go to. I believe supports need to be added, mentorships need to be added, tutoring needs to be added, different programs need to be added. We need to meet our kids where they're at. However, those children that cannot abide by the rules, bringing BB guns and other stuff, then there's a process for that, and I stand by that process, and we will bring them before the board for that decision. Thank you.
And I do, and Superintendent, I appreciate those comments, and I just want to add because I want to make sure, because I know we're all on the same page, is amongst some of the concerns, I also heard solutions, right? And so, the teachers have given us very tangible things that they believe will help. And so, I know that there was a request that we look at subpay. We went to conferences, and we saw what is happening around the nation as it relates to the sub shortage, and they want to be at the table. What I heard is we want training, and we want to have a seat at the table when these recommendations and changes are being made. And I do want to commend the superintendent for going to Brookside, is, and not just because it's something, it's, Superintendent always did walkthroughs, but what this is, is an intentional focus on what we know is a problem area. Nobody wants to go on Facebook or log into social media or go to school when it lets out and have the perception be that Waukegan is a madhouse. My son attends these districts, and he will be going to Waukegan High School. And so, the superintendent will be at those three campuses, as she stated, and that is for the Board of Education. So, again, if she's not at Lincoln Center, she's in those buildings and in that community, and she's doing that out of direct conversations that she's had with this Board of Education. And so, there will be changes. And so, the board, I believe, based on what the community has told us they want to see and what it is that we have said we want to see, should make sure that we are understanding is that there may be some changes and that we will be supporting the superintendent in these efforts to make sure that our high schools are providing the learning, education, and experience that our students deserve.
And I do want to leave with this. As I've been visiting with staff on my listening tour, and I've only gone to Brookside and Washington thus far, staff has said, what can I do? I'm not going to ask you for the world. I'm going to ask you to adopt one child. One problem, just one, not two, not three, just one problem child that you deem as a problem. You pick one, and do you deepen their heart, give them that support, give them that love, and work with them. Because if we all just adopt one baby, we're going to save so many babies, and that's what we're in this for. We're in this to ensure that they're successful in their next endeavor. And since I've been at Brookside, I've probably adopted 20. So, I've heard the comment, yes, you know, Ms. Placencia got cussed out, she called attorney. Actually, I would say that was not cussed out. And I would tell you, me and that young lady are the best of friends right now because I built a relationship with her. So, when I walk the halls, she's like, hi, Ms. Placencia, how's your day going? And so, yes, one bad incident turned into a positive incident, and she's going to class. And so, I would continue to check on her, but we all need to do our part. And coming out of a pandemic, we went through it, did not expect this, but coming out, I'm going to go back to what our board president says, we have to show grace to one another. And that's not only adult to adult, that's adult to student, that's student to parent, that's parent to student, that's parent to staff, that's admin to staff, principal to teacher. We are not out of this. We're almost at the finish line. We started this strong, we were strong in the middle, let's come out strong. But the only way we're going to have victory is if we stay together.
So, thank you, and I did, I wanted to make sure that all of those who did speak this evening felt heard, and also that the board was aware of some of those changes and that the superintendent is spending more time at the campuses. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have the items that have been presented. Any board member can request that any item be held over for any reason. Does anyone have a request to hold any items over and voting them separately?
I motion to approve the items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez to take consent agenda items A through E, seconded by Ms. Leguizamo. Roll call, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes. Items approved. Item 10A, Policy 3509, vehicle use. Item 10B, Policy 6046, prohibition against bullying, second reading. Item 10C, engagement illegal counsel. Item D, 2021-22 school improvement plans. And E, approval of partial facility rental waiver request for LCCA 2021 concerts. I'm not going to put her on the spot, but if we can go back up with just a brief statement, item 10D with the school improvement plans is if there's an opportunity to change the formatting, and we can talk about that at a future date, but I did want to know that some of the community felt, or not community, some of the board felt, we could tighten that up with Howard's view, they're making it consistent.
Yeah, well, Dr. Knoll, take that down, and we'll come back to the board with that.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Personnel, so we got 12A.
It is a recommendation that the Board of, Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation to approve the appointments and accept the retirements and resignations as found on schedules F-969, L-916, and G-627.
Mr. Riddle, I so move that we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Leguizamo. Any comments or questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes.
Item approved, motion carries. Okay, we are now at item 15A, which is the financial reports, ratification of the first processing of board bills for November 2021, and manual check request payments and first Midwest insurance payments for the period of October 2021 through November 2nd, 2021.
It is a recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education ratify the first processing of board bills for November 2021 and manual check request payments and first Midwest insurance payment for the period of October 2021 through November 2nd, 2021. The accounts payable board October 2021 through November 2nd, 2021, payments total $5,714,172.05. The manual check request payments for the period of October 2021 through November 2nd, 2021, total $851,717.10. The first Midwest insurance payments for the period of October 2021 through November 2nd, 2021, total $776,231.27.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Riddle, I so move that we accept the recommendation, the superintendent, for the approval of, as stated.
A motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Wozniak. Any comments or questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes.
Item approved, motion carries. We are now at our reports, committee reports. Are there any?
I would just state, Board President, that the Capital Improvements Committee met twice. Our last meeting was October the 18th, October the 19th, I'm sorry, and, oh, I guess it was the, and anyway, the Capital Improvement Committee is, is working on the items that the committee feels are the most important, restructuring those. I believe you and I were both at the last meeting, and we're working towards finalizing that information and bringing it to the board sometime in the next month.
Thank you.
Our next meeting, I believe, of the Capital Improvement Committee is November the 10th.
Can, can we share out, for those of us who are on the PTAC and EAC?
Yeah, this is the time to do so.
Um, I just, I just wanted to mention that our next PTAC meeting is on November 17th, at 6:00 PM. If anyone is interested, parents, teachers, community members, you can contact me, you can contact Lucy, and we can give you the link. We really wanted to focus on bringing more community members to that meeting as we gear up for some of the, addressing some of the issues that teachers and paraprofessionals have been raising. And the Equity Advisory Council has been going great as well. We had our last meeting on November 3rd, and our next meeting is on December 1st, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Right now, our members are currently working on an initiative to create a video introducing ourselves to the community, sort of defining the equity work that we want to work on and what that means. And that's it.
Board President, so in addition to the PTAC Committee, the Discipline Committee, as well as the Anti-Bully Committee also met up for the first time, and just, just getting our bearings, setting up the agenda of what we're going to accomplish this, this year. So, if anyone is interested in joining any of these committees, once again, as a community, you can contact myself, Lucy Leguizamo, or Adriana Gonzalez, and we'll get you that information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And everybody receive next, I'm a, I don't know, student board member report, I'm jumping the gun.
So, good evening, everyone. So, today I wanted to kind of discuss those results or feedback that I received from students, which I wasn't able to present last time because I was busy on college applications. But, so regarding the middle schools, overall, I did receive a lot of feedback throughout, and I do have a lot of bullet points, so bear with me. So, let's see, so many students, honestly, yeah, they just said, no, there's nothing, while others, they did have a paragraph to say, or just specific things, you know, small different sentences. So, the first one says that they would like to see more books in the library so they can read. Another said that they would like classrooms to interact more with one another. One says they want, a lot of people just said they want more programs, and then I found one specific response that said that they want a program of some sort where they talk about careers and dream jobs or fields. And this was another one, where people said they wanted more motivational posters in the hallways. And this one, I think, is very, very important. I'm assuming, this was a female, but I don't know, but they said that they want more female, or they would like more female products in the girls' bathroom to use. And then adding on to that, they said better bathrooms in middle school. And then, I believe this is Abbott Middle School, and this person, they said that adding a fence around the walking path because, quote unquote, they said creeps come and stare at us when we're playing outside. They said, one time, a man started talking to me and some girls. I ignored him, but he kept asking, is that fun and can I play? He was pushy on getting us to speak to him until the gym teacher came, and then he left. So, I think that is very, very important, you know, for children and student safety. I think that may be having the gym teachers kind of, obviously, I know that they're, they are probably spread out, but making sure that the students that are kind of more, more so spread out around the field, that they are watching closely, so that does not happen. Another student says, having more minutes for a passing period, such as five and not three, which is similar to high school, five-minute passing period. They said that because some, I think they specifically said for this person, they said that they have a class at like the third floor, and then they have to get all the way to the bottom floor, so it's not enough, and they get late to class because of that and because the hallways are so packed. So, having more time allows them to get to class on time, and it also allows security and teachers to catch students that are, you know, skipping or not wanting to go to class. And then, another one was having a place for students to go to study after school, because I know that in high school, obviously, we have the library, we can go to that. I know that some teachers offer their classrooms, you know, to go and study if they want. So, I'm assuming that this person doesn't know anything about being able to go, where, where they can go study after school at their perspect, at their respective middle school. Another person said having different food options. They said that the pizza and like the nuggets, they're just consistent, so they said having more different food options. And then, lastly, this was, I think this is only one response that I got, but I don't know honestly how this would work, because I was thinking about it myself. But this person said, having middle school start later. Students have indicated that starting early causes them to not want to wake up, not want to go to school at all, and having them start a little later allows them to get a little bit more sleep and help them wake up more fresh, which does motivate them in a way to actually get ready for school and go, and not have the feeling of, I don't want to go to school because I'm tired. So, those are just honestly some of the responses that I kind of saw throughout the Google form. So, I hope that, you know, I know there are a lot, so I hope, I will probably, if I will, I probably will send that to Mr. Alajakis or the board members, so they can kind of actually look into that more. And then, lastly, about the economics class specifically, which was AP Macroeconomics and then AP Microeconomics. So, after speaking with students myself and the Google form, they did indicate that they would like to see those classes. The reasoning being is that, you know, obviously, we have Intro to Business, we have Consumers Ed, but they would rather have a more rigorous class, so they can kind of feel how it'll be in college, especially the fact that there are a lot of students that want to go into business and that do want to possibly do their own entrepreneur-ing after high school. So, having those classes and allowing them to learn more before heading into college or whatever path they desire to choose, I think that will benefit students a lot. Obviously, that would... Obviously, that would be a lot different in terms of period. One example that I personally can give is having just one class period for both those classes. Meaning, example, I have two AP classes, specifically AP Calculus and then AP Statistics, and those are only fifth period and sixth period. So it can be very similar to those, as not that many students go for those classes, but students are still interested in them. And I know that even AP Chemistry, I think they only have about seventeen or twenty, I think it's seventeen or twenty-seven students in total, you know, throughout the whole day. So those are just kind of examples of how that might work for AP Macro and AP Microeconomics. But that is my student board report today. Thank you.
And so it's always exciting, each student board member brings their own personality and expand the role. And so the fact that Mr. Lozani has been getting feedback from middle schoolers, as well as utilizing surveys and really working closely with the communications officer to make sure that he is getting student voice, and presenting those and actually getting some wins. So with these next two months, I want to see one of those bullet points so that we can add to his college resume on not only what he discussed, but our accomplishments and how he helped move this district and students forward. So we thank you for your service, and are glad we got you for another two months and that you can act as a mentor to the student board member coming behind you. Next up is our delegates report. Ms. Hannah?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I just want to report that Triple I will be November nineteenth through the twenty-first, and in that time, there'll be the Delegates Assembly that will be voting on the resolutions for this year that will be advanced to, to our legislators. And I just want to, I received, well, I think all of you may have received a, an email from Kristen Paxton, and they want to offer their support, and they want to collaborate on the resolution that we presented and that the Resolution Committee voted not to adopt. And she says that if it doesn't pass the November vote, which it will be voted on in the Delegates Assembly, then she wants to help us to do it for next year. So there, it, it was a very substantive resolution, and it was for the struggling readers that we, that we have. And so I am glad to get the support of, of other people with this, with our phonic resolution. And that will be voted on, on Saturday, November twentieth, at ten, ten AM at the Triple I. And also, I will be attending a webinar tomorrow for the Delegates Assembly. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
And Ms. Hannah, was there anything that you, any resolutions that you needed guidance on, or would you?
You guys can, yeah, all the board members, if, if you all could maybe send your resolution picks or support to the Superintendent or to the Board President, and make it, pass that on to me, I would appreciate that so that we, I, I could get down in the Delegates Assembly and vote how you all want me to.
Board members, are there any specific questions that you have on any of the resolutions that you needed to address with the entire board, or can you reach out to Ms. Hannah directly?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make, because I know last, last time I just gave my stuff to Ms. Hannah, so we're going to change it and then give it to Board President and Superintendent.
I would rather you not to break OMA, give your specific feedback directly to Ms. Hannah. Ms. Hannah is authorized to vote her conscience as our designated delegate, right? But if you have a opinion, if you have a voice, remember, I was the only person who supported the one thing that we won't speak about, and I told her that, and she voted her conscience based on the other feedback. So she does take that into consideration and wants to know how the rest of the board feels, but I would encourage you to give that feedback directly to Ms. Hannah. You don't have to go through.
Right, and, and if I may, Mr. President, they are again putting the resolution about the, about the gun in the schools. So you guys, I, I, did all of you receive the resolution book?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and so those, the resolutions that you all want me to vote yes on, you guys can just let me know, or like I said, give, give them to Mr. Ewing, and he will get them to me.
Ms. Hannah, do you want this hard copy when we see you at the Triple I, or do you want me to just email it to you?
You, you, you can email it to me and, or, yeah, email it to me, but just put on there how you, how you want me, whether you want me to support it or not support it.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's report, item D.
At this time, I'd like to call Andy Lattimore up, who is going to give a report for Finance. But I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank Brother Planks for his assistance at the high school this week. So thank you for taking that child and stating you will mentor her. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen on the board, educational colleagues, community members, both here and those at home viewing us. Ms. Masensi, thank you for taking time out of your superintendent's time to let us present this. The Business Financial Services Department recently received information, Ms. Pokedit, who sends her regards, by the way. She's out of the district. On a grant for abatement by ISV, it's called PTRG, the Property Tax Relief Grant. What we're asking the board to do, what we're asking the board to do this evening is give us a head nod, and if you are so disposed, we will come back to you at the OSC meeting next week with some specific information, like impact on property owners, actual computations, things of that nature. What PTRG is, it provides districts, provides districts the ability to lower property taxes by using state funds, because the local district will forego its local tax revenue, essentially a replacement. The slide you see in front of you is a simple process, but there are a couple of cautions we want to bring to your attention before you give us a head nod, either affirmative or negative. The district has to rebate taxes for two years. So it's a two-year commitment. If a district were to commit on year one and renege on year two, then the funds that were awarded under the grant will be removed from its basic funding minimum, which is the evidence-based funding. The chart you have there, you see in the bottom left-hand side, this is a simple example, because every district is different. The state chose to use a hundred dollars as an increment. So in year one, if the district abates a hundred dollars, it'll get ninety percent back. That's a deposit to the district's revenue stream. Ten percent of that, it does not get back. So from our case, based on the very, very preliminary numbers, that's about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Can you, I'm sorry, just a little bit out of Mr. Lattimore?
About eight hundred thousand, I'm going to say it again, I'll say it again. First year, the example they give, if, if a district had a hundred dollars, you get ninety percent back. That would be a deposit back to the district, a hard check. Ten percent, we call it, you leave on the table, meaning you will not get that back. So that's about, on the very gross preliminary numbers, and that's why I say if you give us a head nod, we'll proceed forward with specificity. That's about eight hundred thousand dollars. Yes, sir?
Now, a question, who would that benefit?
Oh, you're going to get to that. He's asking, who is it going to benefit? So I just asked that because I couldn't hear. If there are any other questions related to the presentation, I'll ask that you hold them until the end.
Thank you. So year one, ten percent is left. Year two, and remember, the district must abate for two years. It provides relief to the local taxpayer. Year two, the ninety dollars in this example, or was a hundred, gets added to the evidence-based minimum. Please note, that's second bullet. You may have a decline or an increase, we cannot tell, so that's the risk in the second year. That is going to change district by district. So if we get a head nod to proceed forward, to apply for the grant, we'll give you specificity as best we know it moving forward. And in the third year, no abatement's required, because we only commit for two years. And the ninety dollars that we got credit for in year two stays in your basic minimum. So your base grows. That second year continues to grow through time. So that's essentially the process. Right now, I think we're sixty-two percent for state adequacy. Any questions on that process? And this is preliminary. The last slide, next slide, please, Mr. White. Oh, okay. Let's use the, please pay attention to that first bullet. As I mentioned before, and I reiterated in the presentation from the state, that stays in your basic minimum and continues to grow. That ninety dollars for year two. Next slide. This is a calendar. We would have to apply by January tenth. We would get notified in March of 2022. And I'll talk a little bit about the closing process at the end. All the Ts will be crossed and the Is will be, should be dotted by the end of May, twenty-two. That's their tentative timeline at this point in time. Next slide, please. This is a process, flow chart, wiring diagram, whatever term you'd like to use. We should be reading it from left to right. ISV in that green circle has just notified all the districts across the state. We're up now in the middle row, top box, top square box on the left-hand side, discussing whether or not you would like to proceed forward. That's where we are at this point, and you can follow the process to continuation. Now, if the board, after OSC and approval at a board meeting, chooses to make a bail, and it is an application, it is not guaranteed, you will apply with other districts who would apply. The state, looking at the computations of property values, et cetera, will make the determination as who's awarded and who is not. If you are awarded the funds, then we would have to do a resolution. Resolution by the board approved, it would be filed with the county. The county would certify, it meets specifications, notify ISV, and then the grant would be awarded to the district. That's essentially the process. And that would start in January and end circa May, early June, 2022. That's the process, that's the timeline, and that's specifications. Any questions? Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, sir, haven't, haven't we applied for this grant in the last couple of years, and we were denied it? What makes you think that if we apply this year, we may get it? Or do we lose anything by applying again?
You do not lose anything by applying again, and Brian has a history, because I was at the district for several years. My understanding is, my absence, you've applied twice over like a five-year period?
Twice, about three and two years ago, and then opened it last year, didn't have it last year.
Right.
The one year, the one year, I think they took like the top thirty-nine, and we were like forty-one, so we're pretty close.
Close, but.
But didn't quite get over.
Keep trying and, what you're, Mr. Loza, are you saying, keep trying, it's worth to keep trying to submit the grant, and maybe we'll be lucky and get it?
Yes, it's, it's worth a try.
Okay.
So can't hurt to try.
So, can we, can we answer Mr. McBride's question, though? Oh, or Shams?
Mr. McBride's question, which was, because you're done with the presentation, all right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, and so Mr. McBride's question was, who does this benefit?
It benefits the local taxpayer approximately, and Brian can check me on the numbers. I believe the district, specifically the board, has authorized an abatement over the last several years, that's about a million dollars. So essentially, you would not be using your money, you'd be using the state's money if you were awarded the grant, in simple terms. It's oversimplification, but just so you get the picture. And again, we're only looking for a head nod, we're not looking for confirmation.
Review this, it appears to me it's a plus for the taxpayers as well.
Correct. Oh, oh, if I could, I mean.
In the Waukegan instance, instead of, should see in this one hundred dollar rebate, it would be an eight million dollar abatement each year.
Correct.
And so we would reduce the income tax, or the property tax bill by eight million. And in the state, the first year would pay us ninety percent of that, or seven point two million. We would lose eight hundred thousand the first year.
Correct.
But in so doing, the last couple of years, we've left money on the table by, by freezing the taxes from one year to the next. We've lost like nine hundred thousand one year, and about a million two the next year, so.
Right.
This would be an eight hundred thousand dollar difference.
According to the state, opportunity to lower the property tax burden on local taxpayers, with state replacing a portion of the forgone tax revenue with state funds. And the term "portion" is a function of where you stand in the food chain with your EAVs, et cetera, et cetera. It is a formula that the state uses, so it's not necessarily a hundred percent in all cases.
My question was Rick's question.
So it, it almost sounds like a, like a no-brainer that, that we would want to, from what Mr. Loza just said, we would want to do something like this and, and hope that we would get it, because it would, in essence, reward our taxpayers, and then secondly, even reward our district, because we've been freezing our holding level, the, the.
Correct, and as Mrs. Loza indicated, my absence, you were very close to getting it last time. It's not a guarantee, because the landscape changes, obviously, with each district. But I, it's worth, we just want a head nod, do you want us to proceed forward with computational numbers? Come back to you at OSC, and to Mr. McBride's point, this is me for a taxpayer, we'll give you a couple scenarios. They'll say, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar house, here's what it means, et cetera, that, that type of thing, so it's more concrete for the, for the layman to understand.
Great, wonderful.
Our citizens are informed.
I also, I also just think, you know, because I, this is, this is more foreign to me than anything. But in the event, what's worst-case scenario, in the event that something happens to the state, or, you know, that the second year is decreased by some, by some measure?
If I understand your question correctly, the state is not going to probably announce a grant. The last grant cut I looked at was fifty million dollars, is what it was worth.
Okay.
So they're probably not going to authorize a grant to, I believe it was like twenty-eight districts, if I remember correctly, got awarded last time, and then pulled the plug, because they're asking you, as a district, for a two-year abatement.
Okay.
So it's kind of a contract.
They're committed, you know?
Thank you.
So do I understand we have an affirmation, Mr. President? Do we have an affirmation to move forward?
I said, you asked for head nods, Ms. Hannah, are you shaking your head?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if those that were approved the first year were, are able to reapply the second year and, and get it? Even though this is like a two-year program?
They're in it for two years, but they could probably reapply again. They're in it for two years, but they could probably reapply again, after the two years.
My understanding for this year's announcement for FY '22 went out to all school districts in the state. That's my understanding.
Okay, because I see, so for 2022, they've awarded about forty-nine point seven million. In 2020, they were at fifty-three point six, and 2019, they were at fifty million. But in 2020, we were number forty-one, and they awarded up to thirty-nine. And in 2019, we were number fifty-nine, and they awarded only up to twenty-eight. Right, so we're a lot less. I mean, I gave the head nod in the first two as well, so I'm, I'm okay with it as well. But when we're looking at it, we might not also get it, but I'm hoping we could for our taxpayers, because I'm wondering if those that had applied previously won't be eligible anymore for this, this round, and that'll bring us up on that, that, that number, so that's where I stand, so thank you.
I'm not sure, but who will do is we'll research that, that's a very good question, we'll research that. But from what I was understanding, reading the literature and the PowerPoints, et cetera, all school districts for FY '22 were announced. But it would seem to me, if I was an antico making up a school district, and I was still on, I couldn't reapply and double dip. But we'll verify that question for you and try to give you an answer at the OSC meeting, okay?
Thank you. All right, so that concluded superintendent's report, so we're at information items. The only item there is our four-year report, which for the board will be coming out on a monthly cadence, and is accessible and available to the public as well. There are no old business items, so we are at new business. Go ahead, old business.
Really quick on the old business, this is an initiative that was talked about when student board member Austin Cantu was sitting here. And as we're talking a little bit more about the high school and restorative practices, one of the initiatives I'd like to bring back around is the, I want to say, like the change-up, reorganization of in-school suspension, right? We, they, the students at that time felt that those students going into ISS, it's a missed opportunity for restorative practices, mentorship programs, tutoring, and even some other type of wraparound services. Those students are in-house, they're in the school, and, and it's just a missed opportunity that we're not doing something like that. So it was an idea that Mr. Cantu had talked about. It's something that, you know, I was hoping to look at when we were looking at the high school redesign assessment, and just kind of bringing that back around to review, if that's something that you would be interested in doing.
Definitely something I'm interested in doing, but also something that's on the table right now as we're looking at the systems in alignment, along with mentorship and so many other different programs. So yes, Mrs. Leguizamo, thank you.
Thank you for that.
I just want to, I just want to say that Brother Blake's been going to that mic several times, and everything that you echoed, he's been saying it over and over and over. You know, when you arrest someone, how do you rescue them once you arrest them? Or you just put them back out, and they do the same thing over again? But that was an opportunity that you had at that moment to capitalize some issues and problems. Now you got a chance to do something with them, but when you don't do something with them, you put them right back out. It's almost like putting me on five years probation and you giving me nothing, I'm gonna violate every time.
Right, and, and, you know, to your point, and we've heard about this too, Mr. McBride, when other people have came up to public comment, just kind of mentioned that there's a quote-unquote administrative top two, right? And so sometimes, some of that information isn't filtered down to the teachers as to like what, what was done, anything that they can help to support whatever that restorative practice was that occurred, type of thing. So I think that collaborative thing just needs to occur, just that full set, put that all in full, full perspective. So thank you, Board President.
Thank you, and just as a gentle reminder, because I know we all are super busy and getting through it, but if there is a topic or discussion that you all want to introduce, email us, and that way, the board can actually, or even the administration can be prepared to speak on it. And sometimes, we can start to close the loop on some of these issues that have been dragging out for a long time. Because we look at it, we think we talk about it, we think it's addressed, some of it gets emailed. But I like a more consistent, if it's gonna be under old business, or if we have a request for something that we want to see on the agenda, email me and the superintendent, and I'll request that we include Ms. Alajakis, and we'll get it placed. So I know there was Mr. McBride, who, for example, wanted to go to NAPSE. He mentioned it, I forgot, we have no documentation, and so we didn't act on it. And so I do take credit, but I do need help as well, to remember all the different requests. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to do that. And it also helped with our meetings, so we know how long we'll be here, based on what discussion topics we have. Next up, then, under new business, we'll take the actual new business first, and then if there is something that someone needed to throw out, we will, which is the nineteen B position reclassification for senior legal compliance officer.
It is recommended that the Board of Education reclassify the position of single, like, single, senior legal compliance officer to that of deputy general counsel.
Mr. Riddle, I saw a move that we accept the recommended action, the superintendent?
Motion by Mr. Riddle. Second by Ms. Leguizamo.
Charlotte.
Charlotte, Ms. Wasniak. Roll call vote, please.
Sir, can we have a discussion?
But what, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
What, what, what exactly does that mean?
It's written there in the, if you want to read what we're asking.
Yes, I, I read it, but I still didn't understand why the reclassification.
Ms. Hannah, this is a title change to the position only. We think it better reflects the scope of the work that is done, which goes beyond the compliance work. It will still have a primary focus on supporting the diverse learner department and serving as the Title IX non-discrimination coordinator, but the position does do more than that. We also feel it will bring in a more experienced candidate.
That's what I figured, that's good.
And does that have a different price tag?
No, it would be within the same range, in terms of salary.
All right, we have a motion and a second. There are no further questions, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Ms. Callahan Wasniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
President Ewing?
Yes, Ms. Hannah, was that a pass, a yes or a no?
I passed.
Okay. We are now down at legal reports, are there any?
No.
All right, and we are at board member time. I'm gonna start down at the end with Ms. Gonzalez.
Oh, can I go last?
Sure, Mr. Riddle.
Okay, I, I just really wanted to thank our area superintendent, Ms. Patty, and principals, Ms. Price, and, and Ms. Quinones Nelson, and, and Ms. Jensen, and, and Mr. Silva, for inviting the board to do some walkthroughs. That was the week of October 25th, and I know board members took advantage of that, and I took advantage of visiting all four schools, Cook, Carmen, Lyon, and Oakdale. And what I, I was very pleased with what I saw. There was, the buildings were in great shape, there was a lot of student work that was being displayed on the boards and in the hallways. And what we had was the opportunity to see the students engaged in learning, and, and actually, I gained certainly a much better understanding of our implementation of curriculum mapping. So I really appreciate the opportunity that was offered, and, and I'm sure the other board members do as well. So that was a great learning experience for me, and I, and I was also surprised at the, at how our curriculum mapping, many of our students are using, getting, digging a lot deeper in, in, in learning. You know, the, the depth of knowledge that they have, as we moved from looking at kindergarten through fifth grade, the children were, were doing a lot more questioning. So it wasn't just knowledge being thrown at them, but they were really learning and engaged. And I thought that's definitely the way the district needs to continue to, to move, and I was pleased to see that, that we've, we're working in that direction. So thank you again to all the principals and the staff, and, and the teachers and the kids, who we had the opportunity to speak to as well. So it was great, great learning opportunity for the board, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Mr. McBride?
I had an opportunity to go over to the high school myself, and just spend the whole day. And one thing that I did recognize, I would just recommend, I don't know how we could do it, but to stagnate passing of the period change, I'm saying that because it's almost like you have a, it's almost like when you let a herd of cattle go, somebody gonna run over each other, and you're gonna have, always have problems. So if you, we could figure out a way to stagnate the, the classes, where so many students will be running down the hallways at the same time when the bell rang, I think that would help us tremendously too with some of the issues that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. Ms. Leguizamo, Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Board member time.
Oh, board member time, oh. I have, I've had the opportunity to be at the high school as well, and I agree with Mr. McBride that there needs to be a different movement structure for, for the students and to stop a lot of the chaos going on over there. But more importantly, I just want to ask if our, we brought the children back after, after sixteen to eighteen months in remote learning, and I have been, I'm gonna say pleading with, with, with the powers to be, if you will, in the district, to get before the student body and reacquaint the students with the expectations of, of being in the school district. And so I just want to know if, number one, did that take place? Number two, if it didn't, we are getting ready to start another, the second semester. We saw how the first semester went, and I am asking in a public forum that administration and the Board of Education go before the student body and, and set forth the expectation so that all of the students hear it. And, and I certainly hope that we can, seeing how we are trying to come up with salutations, I believe it will be very beneficial to the students to hear the expectations, not just from the high school, but from those that, the board, and, of course, the superintendent. So I certainly hope we can do that, and maybe calm down some of the things that we have been seeing in, at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Next up, Ms. Leguizamo?
Thank you, Board President. I'll be brief here, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to visit two elementary schools to observe the curriculum mapping. I was able to observe the GLAD strategies, and monolingual, dual-language classes, and bilingual classes. It showed the, the curriculum alignment between buildings, as well as classroom autonomy, for rigorous education. I provided a full summary of my observations to the superintendent, so that she can forward on to her team. But I just want to give a big kudos to all the teams that worked so hard, put together this, this curriculum. I see a lot of great growth in this educational strategy, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leguizamo. Ms. Wasniak? Possibly. Well, if you can try and get her for the last few moments, we'll continue. Ms. Wasniak?
Okay, I am excited to announce that the Waukegan Public Schools Foundation is the proud recipient from Granger of eighty-two thousand reusable face masks, fifty-eight hundred disposable face masks, plus lots of hand sanitizers, and it's a great, a great thing to have our community supported by local businesses. And Granger has stepped up and given us eighty-seven thousand hand sanitizer bottles. So, and also, I'd like to, and I, I, with great regret, I have to say that this year, we don't think we'll be able to do the, the Waukegan Parks Foundation in conjunction with the Waukegan School District, the all-second-grade field trip to the Hinkston Park because of all the different things, COVID, eating together, busing. There's not enough buses to get us there, we talked about doing an after-school Monday option, and that's not working out. So regretfully, we'll have to suspend this year's all, all-second-grade field trip, because COVID is still with us.
If, if it's better, would you guys consider third grades for the next-year option?
Well, we wanted to this year, to do the second and third graders this year, but we, there's just not, the buses aren't available, as, as we talked about in meetings, that they don't have enough bus drivers, they, well, they have enough bus drivers to cover our routes, they just don't have spares, and they don't have extras, and they don't have, parents are concerned about kids on the bus, kids eating lunches together. It's just a whole, a whole lot, yeah. And so hopefully, we can bring it back next year, when everybody's immunized and vaccinated, and we're ready to go.
Thank you. I'd love to talk more about that too, Ms. Wasniak, see if there's some creative things that we can do. Yeah, tried everything.
We tried many different things, you know, there's timing, there's this, you know, we're already into November, and we really needed to start as soon as possible. And the option we had come up with was only gonna serve as twenty students at each school. So that was, it was a Band-Aid, and not a real picture. And so we'll, we're gonna have to try and figure out something in the future.
Thank you for, for the update. Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay, I'll go, and I'll try to be brief. My biggest takeaway from this meeting, I think, is just the need for follow-up. I appreciated Mr. Ewing, our President Ewing, for saying that, you know, if we mention something, we might need to mention it more than a couple of times, because I do send emails, and sometimes I wonder, I'm like, is it, is it gonna be read? Is, you know, people got a million things going on, and, you know, I, I, I think about my, my actual job, and I think about all the things that we're involved in, and yeah, things can slip, because when you're focused on several things at once, sometimes you need those reminders. So, so that's what I'm taking away from this meeting, as my responsibility to work on. The other big thing that I'm taking away is, you know, obviously, we've been hearing a lot of teachers and paraprofessionals say that they want to see us more in the schools, that they want us to better understand what they have to go through on a daily basis. And I'm willing to, to make that time. I've always been pretty open and willing to, to go into a classroom or to talk with different people. I know some folks have already reached out. I went with Mr. Riddle to Oakdale, and I, and I was so impressed by the caliber of our students. I mean, they were jumping to answer questions, and I know at their age, I was nowhere near as brave enough to answer questions or be as active in the classroom. So I think that that's a positive from, you know, being back in schools and having our students... and having our students be with each other to learn and engage. The other thing that I just want to give a shout out to are all the local businesses and, you know, local entrepreneurs, community members, who have gone about just promoting positivity in Waukegan, where I think sometimes there is a lack thereof. I was really happy to be one of the board members that went to the BLM dinner on Sunday, saw a lot of amazing people. I think it was a really great space. And these past couple of weeks, I've been to a lot of different open houses or events. And I think that, you know, I'm just reminded every day that I want this to be over. And I know our young folks, younger than me, want this to be over. So I'm definitely looking forward to when we can hold our vaccination site. And I'm excited for the Lee County Health Department for getting that information out on their social media for how to get, you know, the littlest ones vaccinated. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And just very briefly, I met today with Bravo Waukegan. So just to kind of get updated on where they were with their programming, they'll be coming to the board later on this year. But just wanted to inform the board of that conversation. Again, encourage everyone in our community to get vaccinated. I do believe that is our best tool to combat this virus. And so I thank everybody for their attention this evening. It was 8:30. With that, I'd like for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wasniak, second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Thank you, Board of Education. We will see you guys next week.